Not required plan for map 105.
This is for acceptance of the A and R to start the clock. The application is going to be considered on the 23rd.
Is he planning to present something this evening or just?
No, he submitted the A and R to the office.
Are you going to be in stereo today?
He's got something important to say.
Okay.
Sing us some Sinatra.
So you're just putting it on the record that's been received?
Yeah, that starts the clock when you, when the planning board accepts it.
Did they act on that in either the last two meetings or this is the first submittal?
This is the first submittal.
Do you want us to look at it?
This is John's cluster development?
Yes.
Have you seen this?
Here's another copy.
They act on the cluster in the last two meetings?
Not in the last two meetings.
Is it prior to that?
Prior to that.
And decision was done and all that?
There was some confusion in the record of the meeting. But apparently the conditions were determined and the decision was made on a special permit.
At this point, I can't remember what I wrote down. Any questions on the A and R?
I want to point out that on the endorsement panel, one has been placed on the most recent version of the plan, which says that it's a, this plan is in accordance with a special permit granted for residential cluster development issued March 23rd, 2020, which is incorporated by reference as part of this plan and is to be recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds.
This, this doesn't have the detail that we looked at at the last meeting?
No, the special permit plan does.
Okay, and all the, the conditions that we set are recorded with that special permit?
Yes, the special permit is the one with the conditions. There's no conditions that are placed on the.
On the A and R?
A and R.
No, I understand.
That's the reason why we're wrapping them together.
I say that there's been so much confusion over this project. I just wanted to make sure that the conditions that we discussed were actually applied to the special permit.
Right.
So then we don't want to act on this time?
No, you don't.
Okay. So we'll just take it under advisement at this point. Act it on in concert with the. Discussion to clarify definitions of multifamily dwellings under Article 3. What did you have on that, Ken?
I didn't have anything on the articles, except if there was something else that the planning board wanted to take up at this point. Regarding the articles such as the report to town meeting.
Since I wasn't present for that, do you have any, do you have a report or anything other than the minutes I can look at? I suppose I can do that. I didn't look at that section of the meeting.
I thought. Ken? Hadn't we, we had discussed, this is fine, but we had discussed adding a horizontal demising surface as a floor or ceiling. You want to take that out or? The language we agreed to at one of the meetings was to add the distinction provided by having a horizontal demising plane. I don't think it's that critical, but why, why is it missing from this?
I don't know. Now you wanted a separate definition of demising wall or just?
It was sort of an or, or an and/or. If you have a two-story, three-story, certainly a two-story dwelling, building with dwellings one on top of the other, that's two-family also.
As a horizontal.
Yeah. And we had that, we had that language in one of the documents I gave you, but I don't see.
Yeah, it was on, is that, am I looking at the same thing you're looking at?
Yes, yes.
Sharing a common demising wall?
Correct.
So we can add that in?
Yeah, I don't have my copy of the other one. I thought we were all done with it. I think it was Mark pointed out that that was a distinction to be made. And the language that we last agreed upon was included that.
Do you remember the wording at this?
Would be something like sharing a common demising wall and/or, oh, no, I'm sorry, I don't remember. But it, it involved accounting for a horizontal demising plane, floor or ceiling. I can, I can look it up and is it permissible to send it to you?
Horizontal or vertical?
Huh? Horizontal or vertical?
Right, horizontal is how, what it stated now.
No, it's vertical, the demising, well, the intent here is a vertical demising wall.
Saying the depths.
Unit, unit, but if the units are like this.
Right.
That other language accounted for that. I can dig it up.
That'd be good. I appreciate that.
Oh, my phone's in the car, sorry.
The, the signed by law Article 11, that's in accordance with AG's recommendations, so.
That's right.
What did you do? I saw something on the tape about separating two steps on the FLEMA.
Yeah, this last paragraph in the minutes explains what the recommendation was. On the very back side.
So as suspected, it was recognizing exemptions on the maps.
Yes, the flood maps show where exceptions have been granted. Thank you.
Did you have a hard copy?
Yeah.
Of those exemptions, are they reflected in the neighboring properties also by the maps or?
No, just for the properties that have been.
So it doesn't recognize any contours or reason why the?
Not that I'm aware of.
So what would you like to do with these, Ken?
What I'd like to do is have a determination of how you want to present them to town meeting.
I'll need some help there where I wasn't present for the hearing. I didn't hear the discussion, so I can watch it again, but.
I'll write up a report then.
I just watched the last half of it.
The important half.
Were there corrections made to these? Is that why they're still in here? Do you need a sign off?
Just need to sign. Yeah, those are signed. They're just being on hold because they're executive session minutes and we haven't.
I think I signed the January 13th. Oh, here we go. Maybe Mike might have signed off on those on the 24th.
Maybe so.
So we just have the 24th to do.
Right.
What else do you need? Ken, do we need to? All right, some relief on the multi-family.
I mean in terms of density. Yeah, we do, but haven't figured out what else goes along with that yet.
Oh, I'm sure a lot. I just noticed when I was down south that there were a lot of duplexes showing up, you know, good entry level homes that didn't detract from the neighborhood. They weren't near as monstrous as some of the ones we see up here.
Yeah. Do you have any pictures?
I didn't. I might have taken a picture last year, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we could take examples from other jurisdictions.
There were probably two-bedroom, maybe three-bedroom units on.
Because this is just grass.
I don't think it was, I want to say it was 10,000 square foot lots, might be 15 tops. But you had two nice either starter homes for somebody or empty nesters, you know, low maintenance. And they were more than adequate, big backyards.
I think this is something, when we talk about accessory apartments, it's a key issue going on in town. Building commissioners confronted with. A lot of people asking for accessory apartments or something that looks like an accessory apartment in addition to the house. And the idea of a little more density shouldn't be too scary if the, if the design is, is done correctly. And we can, we can have multiple units on a property and still maintain the character of the neighborhoods.
Well, that's what struck me with these is the lots with the same size and the structures with the same size as the neighboring houses, that they were just set up as duplexes. And it didn't, you didn't say, oh, it is, you could almost walk by them and not notice they were duplexes. Other than two garage doors on opposite sides.
Right.
But increased density is a problem in areas where there's no septic system. I mean, there's no town sewer. So I make that distinction.
You could have two standards, one with and without. I don't know what the.
Limit the number of occupants?
Number of bedrooms.
Bedrooms, yeah.
How does that come into play though?
That's how Title V determines the wastewater flows.
But it doesn't stop you from having three people in a bedroom and overtax the system. Head count is what's going to drive the output, not the number of bedrooms.
Yeah, but how do you police that?
Every house has an occupancy permit, right?
At time of construction, yeah.
Well, if it's an accessory apartment being added, I mean, I had to get an occupancy permit when I did the remodel. I never understood counting the bedrooms. Especially, I mean, on the cape. You could have a three-bedroom cape with 20 people living in it.
Oh, everywhere when the, in season.
Yeah.
We have a little cushion where you have to have your septic system resized to one more bedroom than you have. So we oversize everybody for the sake of the few. Send him a text to see where he was, but I haven't heard.
Why are we waiting?
Waiting on Richard so they would have a full board before us. Before them.
Of course, Sonia's going to fall asleep right in these minutes. She died enough in between conversations.
Some field repairs?
I wish we could broaden the land.
It's on, it's on the. They didn't need to get. What's the reason why?
It wasn't listening to me.
Yes.
Well.
All right, we will enter into the continued public hearing for the site plan review. Major modification for number one, Seth Toby Road, the Starbucks project. Wayham Retail Management.
You guys need previous plan?
It would be nice if we've got them.
Thank you all for your patience as well. For the record, I'm Lindsay Wilson with Brown Rudnick, counsel to the applicant, Wayham Retail Management LLC. As always, High Point Engineering, Derek Redgate is here for traffic. Sean Kelly from Vanessa Associates. Brandon Trams here from the owner applicant, Ulrich USA. And we have Alana Edgerly from Starbucks here. Some firsthand data about expectations of Starbucks-related matters. Procedurally, for two of the members, I know have gotten caught up on the tape of the meeting. But so we had a meeting two weeks ago. We presented a plan. The plan was more consistent with the initial site plan review, layout design, et cetera, and was what had been originally discussed between the owner and Starbucks. We came, we obviously heard your feedback, and there were some concerns that needed to be addressed. We had an informal meeting over the week, on Wednesday, really trying to see, you know, what could we do in the construct of, you know, not doing a full site redesign? And it became clear that it just wasn't going to happen, and that we couldn't get the site to work the way that we needed to, to address your concerns, and the buck stops here. So in coordination with Starbucks, Ulrich went back to the drawing board and came back with, you know, a significant redesign of the building one site to try to address a number of things that Derek can work through and walk through, but really flipping the building, trying to get the drive-through so that both escape from the line is an easier problem to solve, less of, call it lapping around the building, and just overall having it function a little bit more smoothly. So why don't we have Derek just give the engineer's view?
Sure.
And just real quick, I want to say, you know, we, I flew back here Wednesday for the meeting with some of the people that are here, and we heard everyone loud and clear, and, you know, we went back, we went to Starbucks, and we actually took what you guys all said, and we actually think it's a better plan, and we're very happy that we've gone through all this because we really like it. I know Starbucks likes it better, so hopefully we can get through it tonight, and thank you all for the feedback that you've had this whole time.
Actually, to our-
Never thought I'd be here three times in 14 days, but-
But to our earlier discussion about technology versus showing up at a meeting, you know, Ulrich committed to sending a representative from Michigan to every meeting until we get this done, and him hearing it from you is really different than Derek and I trying to communicate, well, they were concerned about such and such. So I think the process is working by what we're doing here, and hopefully, hopefully this plan is working now.
And for the record, I did watch the meeting that I missed, so.
Okay.
It was thrilling.
So this is our revised plan. I think it takes into consideration some of the things we went through two weeks ago. So essentially, the building, we flipped the building. It formerly was facing out towards Seth Toby Road, and we had parking along the frontage. It's been flipped, so now the front door of the building will face into the site. And one of the things we sort of discussed last time in being a constraint was the width of the, of the site. So the width, obviously, of the site hasn't changed at all. It was 133 feet, it made it difficult to park. If we looked at the site as a self-contained site, which was how we were looking at, we weren't, we knew we had the shared parking from the Walmart site, but we were looking at the site to be self-contained and parking all within that 133 feet. So we sort of threw that idea out, and that actually gave us the extra room we needed. So under this concept, we, you would enter the site, there's a one-way circulation pattern. You place your order, get in a queue. If you did not, there's the bypass lane that goes out. The parking for the Starbucks, you would access through what's already existing, the existing shared parking area, and you can turn into our site, or you can utilize the spaces- And you can turn into our site, or you can utilize the spaces in the existing lot. So with all, with all that said, we were actually, we had some more real estate than we needed under the concept that we showed you two weeks ago. So we have expanded the footprint of the building by about 500 square feet. So Starbucks and the retail is slightly larger than what we presented to you two months ago.
It went from 3,600 to 4,080.
We have some sidewalk. We added a crosswalk in the, in the shared parking. That hatched area represents sort of a landing strip, so you wouldn't step into the landscaped area. We have certain, you know, we have pedestrian routes to go from Seth Toby through the site, behind the Starbucks, and crossing over to the Aspen Dental if you had pedestrians. And, yeah, I like this plan, too. I think, I think we were all sort of surprised when we saw it on paper, how much we liked it, so.
That's not going to be, that's just going to be striped.
Which-
That won't-
Going to the Walmart parking?
No, on the Toby Road side. That's just a striped drive-through lane.
That's just a painted stripe, yes, right.
Just a painted stripe, yeah.
Is that going to cause some confusion with your ordering station, people entering?
No, because there'll be the kind of dotted demise lane to separate out the drive lane, drive-through lane, and the traffic drive-through.
So my only concern was actually this crosswalk that's over by the drainage triangle. This indicates that pedestrians should walk towards the main convergence of the intersection at the Cranberry Highway and Toby Road. Is it necessary to have that pushing traffic that way? Or can we push them back down Toby Road? I think, I think it promotes the wrong crossing intersection here. You have folks coming out of-
Can I just point to which?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm saying here.
Oh, okay. So that, that, the purpose of that is to provide connectivity to, to the site itself. So if you were at foot and you were at the intersection, there'd be a pathway through the landscaped area, and then a safe crossing of the drive aisles. And you could either walk to Aspen, or the future new building, or to Starbucks. It's an interior pedestrian way?
Well, no, I'm talking about this zigzag right here that comes down into Toby Road.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, so where, where is this pouring out to? Is that at the intersection of the light?
Yeah.
It is at the intersection, but there's a existing sidewalk. The line is out, the line is out with the crosswalk in Seth Toby. So we're making a connection through our landscaped area that's paved. You know, people walking up Cranberry Highway could be a quick way into this development. Otherwise, you'd walk, unless you cut across the landscaped area, you could take the sidewalk down here and come in that way.
It's not at all intended to encourage pedestrian traffic. It's more to highlight the safest route and creating a safe route if it were to happen. Obviously, this isn't a heavy pedestrian area.
Sometimes a path forms anyway in these things, these areas.
And I think it came out of, my recollection was that this was something that we had discussed on the initial site plan approval, and I think we had stuck in because the board had expressed they wanted some connectivity. I don't know functionality-
That's my recollection. That's my recollection as well.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's good to have.
Yes, but is there a signaled crosswalk there? Can a pedestrian push a button to cross safely there?
No.
Sean, I don't think there is.
Are you talking the Toby Road intersection, or are you talking about-
Yeah, I'm talking the intersection of Cranberry Highway and Toby Road.
That line, no, there is a crosswalk across Toby.
But is it signalized, you push a button?
There's definitely a button, yeah.
Assistance on the bike lane. Because it wasn't a full four feet held up the project on-
But there's, there's nothing to stop anybody from making that right-hand turn onto Toby, though. There's no way to stop anyone doing that.
It's a yield controller.
It is, it is, but there's nothing to stop anybody before that particular crosswalk. The yield sign is at the end of the island there, wherever that is, and-
But there's already a pedestrian crossing there, and there's sidewalks, so.
Yeah, right up to the property line, so I think we had added that in our original site plan approval. But it's really the will of the board.
I just, this is my, my opinion, just human behavior. I'd rather see that push further down Toby Road so that you're coming to the entranceway between Wendy's and the Autozone, rather than push them towards the intersection of the Cranberry Highway. I don't think anyone needs to skirt across the road to get to Delta Dental. I could see somebody parking in Autozone and wanting to go grab a cup of coffee. I'm just, I'm just concerned-
So we would hesitate-
Crossing four lanes of traffic there, it's just-
So we'd hesitate to want to put it further down there because it doesn't line up with this, you know, existing pedestrian traffic that we have, where we have designated it? Because then it becomes kind of an attractive nuisance for people, oh, we have to cross over there, and then they're going to cross in a dangerous manner. I think it's more, do we have a crosswalk at all, or?
Well, I think the Route 28 directs the crosswalk toward Wendy's, not across 28. Goes across Toby Road, if there's anything there at all.
This joins up to what Sean was saying, was the signalized-
Correct, yeah.
Correct. And we, so do you have it on GPS, Brandon?
That's it, yeah.
Is the sidewalk paralleling Toby Road?
And there's actually-
Yes.
There's a handicap ramp there as well, on the, that Mass Highway, on the Mass Highway property. Yep, so we would, we'd connect to that. We're also zigzagged because there's a little bit of a grade difference.
Yeah, that aerial board, Sean, might be helpful to look at.
Yeah, the resolution's terrible, you really can't see the crosswalks on it. It's just too far up. You can't even make out where they are.
Yeah, I think if we are going to have a pedestrian connection, this is the only spot that it would make any logical or safety sense to do it. We don't have to have it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if it necessarily needs to be decided now. But if you have, if you have this crossing down here, you're inside the parameters of the parking lots and safe over here. And here, you're crossing over to the entrance to Wendy's in the Autozone. So why push folks up this way?
If that's what you want us to do, we're happy to just keep the one over there. I mean, whatever, because it's not built yet. I mean, there's the connection there already, but we can, you know, I don't think it's 100% necessary. I thought we were doing it because it was recommended, but-
It's an amenity for the site, makes it a closer walk onto the site, and then provides connectivity. But it's, it's not a critical connection.
Yeah, I guess, I guess you have to keep your perspective. If you're coming from Wendy's and want to go get a cup of coffee, then maybe, that makes sense to me. But for people that are in this lot and saying, I want to go get a cheeseburger, then I'd say, then we're promoting them crossing at a very busy intersection. I mean, it's one, two, three, four, five lanes coming across that intersection right now. Not to mention, you got that New England Farms going across the way pretty soon. I can't, I just see a whole lot of crisscrossing this Cranberry Highway again.
We're happy to just keep the one on that corner then and get rid of that. I mean, that's, I understand what you're saying. We're happy to not put that there.
That's part of the state project, though, and that, that walkway is going to be there regardless of what happens on the site. So the connection, the link to that is appropriate so that it continues, so somebody doesn't end up in the, stuck in the middle of a landscape area.
Yes, because the crosswalk that's going across Toby Road already exists, right?
Right. That was our point about why it had to be there if we're going to put one up that way.
I don't know. I don't see what the harm would be, honestly. I'd rather see them-
Always going to use it anyways. They're going to walk across the grass wherever they want and cross that road, so.
Very little pedestrian traffic in that area, anyway.
The only time I've ever seen it is when Factory Five has an open house. And now that you've got Wendy's, and you've got Aldi's, and you'll have Starbucks, there'll be a place for them to go when they come out of Factory Five and want to go get a bite to eat. Other than that, there's very little pedestrian traffic.
That just means the intersection will be coupled with trouble.
It isn't going to be easy to get across that road, no matter where you are.
So my other question is, we thought Starbucks had an ideal size of a shop, increasing 500 square feet's a lot. What do they do with that extra?
It's going in the retail space, isn't it?
No, both halves open.
It's about 50/50 between the two.
With 250 each side?
Honestly, quite honestly, for the sake of just being honest with you, I don't think that they're going to be taking that extra 500, the extra square footage. This, we did this to get this to you guys as soon as we could. We didn't want to-
Like today, yeah.
Yeah, it might go, probably go to the retail space. And it might change a little bit, probably not. But the most likely, I think Starbucks is staying at where they were before. But we, you know, we don't want to-
We were working on this plan today, so the, the line basically just got extended.
Worst-case scenario.
This, this building will be looked at.
Which is still smaller than what was already permitted last year, which was, I think, 5,400?
Correct, yeah.
And what do you think the candidate is for the other retail space?
We're getting close to being able to announce that.
Is it a low-traffic type of organization, or is it?
Yeah, there's no destination, you know, there's no morning traffic.
Cannabis service.
No.
What I'm getting at is if it's an ice cream shop-
I actually think you're really going to like it.
If it's an ice cream shop and there's a whole lot of traffic, like the coffee shop?
No.
It will not be like, my, nothing is finalized, but it will not be the traffic that the coffee shop takes. And it will be different peak hours also, most likely.
I personally appreciate taking a second look at it.
Is the reason, excuse me, George, I was just going to ask, is the reason for the break in the island there at the northeast corner of the building, is that because it's too narrow to get a curbing, get the sidewalk up on a handicap ramp, and get a flat spot? I'm just, why there's a break there? It's where the crosswalk comes out of your building and goes across the driveway, toward the dumpsters.
Yeah, that was a grade-
So you couldn't get up to six inches, level it off, and then keep it back down?
Once you got up, you'd be coming back down, yeah. We felt is a better design. It keeps everything flat.
Does the reversing of the building change the proposal for the signage? Do we have any, so what actually faces Toby Road now? Is there neon signs, or is it windows? What does the facade look like on the end?
Facing, facing Toby. So this is hot off the presses today. Right now, it would be, it's a rear facade with three or four doors.
So this looks like the backside of the buildings across the street, then?
Similar, yeah. To the Autozone?
We, we haven't finalized the, the new elevations with Starbucks, but it will be appealing from all sides. It's not just going to be a back of the house.
Yeah, it needs to identify, obviously. And this question that you're asking was the whole reason why it had been the other way, is to present a front door to the traffic. That said, you know, Starbucks feels confident enough that they're a destination retailer that they will be found by the community, and that there's sufficient other signage. But, yeah, the rear elevation needs to be looked at and be appropriate.
We had some requirements for the backside of that building, didn't we? Some setback, some plantings, some facade finishes for the buildings across the street, right?
Oh, yeah, because the backside was facing Toby Road, and what we required was that they designed the landscaping and the signage and the materials so that it didn't look like the-
Like a commercial-
Rear side of a-
Yeah, like an industrial space.
And we're happy to meet those requirements. I'm sure she wants us to as well, because we designed buildings like that all over the place. We're just going to look, it will still be appealing from both sides, but happy to see what the requirements were for across the street and make sure we maintain that.
Yeah, there's no backdoor on this thing.
No.
Correct.
Correct. But you can do a lot with facade work to make it seem front doorish.
Your service door will be out that side, I take it?
Yes.
Is there a rough idea of how you lay out the interior? Your dining room going to be on the Walmart parking lot side, or?
Yes.
Or is it going to, like, wrap around something, or?
No, so it would be, yes. Our, our dining room space would be in the front, facing the parking, towards Walmart, so towards the-
And the counter area that lines up with your drive-through window?
Exactly, so the counter would lie along the side where the drive-through window is, and then the back of house would kind of wrap, and the bathrooms would also be along the back. Depending on, typically, we don't have a public door out the back. I don't know what code would require here, so maybe we'd have to have some sort of egress door. But usually, it would just be an employee exit, and that's how they'd get their trash out.
Deliveries and-
And deliveries, yeah. A lot of times, deliveries come through the front, but, yeah.
But they will, they will come back with the architecturals, will they not, to submit? You will submit architectural plans for approval?
We have to for pulling the building permit.
We have to for us, anyway, I don't know.
No, but they'll come before this board, right?
Well, there could be language in the condition language, or the condition could ask us to submit those.
Well, no, just to clarify the questions, the discussion now is an oral discussion relative to visual aspects.
Sure.
The only way to deal with it realistically is for you to come back with the architecturals for the building.
I think what we did, at least for Aspen Dental, was just have it be the condition that it's acceptable to planning in conjunction with the issuance of the building permit. Because we didn't have it be that we had to come back and have another hearing on it.
No, but you showed architecturals.
It was part of your submittal when you did Aspen.
And it's part of this submittal, but we've now flipped the building, so we don't have the back designed. We certainly, we're certainly happy to submit the proposed design of the rear facade.
No, we'd like to see all four facades.
Yeah, and I think that we, and we do, too, and so as we've gone through this, I mean, we would want to apply appropriate signage and make sure the back, because the back of the building facing the road is very important to us in how that aesthetically looks. So as part of, you know, what we would do is, is work together on what all four sides look like, what our signage looks like, and I don't know exactly what the process is.
Our next step would be to resubmit the, the plan set. So right now, the current plan set was, is dated 12/23. But we've, we've now reversed the, reversed the building, and there's some tweaks to the landscaping plan and, and the layout and everything. So we would have a, you know, after this meeting, this week, put that together. That's like a 14, 15-page site plan set. So it would be dated 3/11, 3/12, something like that. Give us time to do that. And we would include, we would include a revised elevations, which is similar to that one. Have you seen that one?
We appreciate three-dimensional drawings, not elevations, you know, just two perspectives. One from the, one from, you know, either northwest to southeast.
So a color rendering, something?
Two, two.
Two color renderings.
One, one from each aspect, from each corner, one from here, one from there.
We can do that.
And this way, this discussion is prematuring in terms of what it's going to look like, because we can't see anything.
Sure, sure.
So please do that. And my other question, which I, do you think that the, moving the buildings a little bit to the- to the west would prevent this, the corner, the east corners of the building seem to cut into the walk around, maybe it's not intended to be a walk-around sidewalk, but if someone is walking north-south along the east side of the building, they then have to step off it because the corner of the building interrupts their walk. If it moved up three feet, four feet, five feet.
Yeah, it's close, and I think we have, we have some room to move it, move it a few feet.
Most likely, as well, from the earlier discussion, the building's going to shrink a little bit. This is kind of the maximum square footage layout as reconfigured, and, you know, if we even tweak it a few feet, it's going to provide those extra feet on the corners.
Thank you.
So, last time we were here with that double loop around the building, we talked about the number of cars in the queue. Is this typical? This is 10?
So, this is, this accommodates for our peak period only. We typically do not see this many cars in the queue. We just always want to accommodate for it, because that would be what we would typically see in a very kind of high-volume max at peak, which is typically just in the morning, about an hour and a half, two-hour period in the morning.
But, would you see more than this? Because our concern was this first turn in, that we'd be backing up to the main entrance of the.
So, no, we usually don't. So, we accommodate for 10, because that's what we usually would see at peak. We have kind of adjusted our menu boards to what we've kind of seen to speed up our service, so we allow more people in between where they order and where they pick up. So, they move forward in the line and actually helps our line go faster.
Or free coffees do as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice design.
You designed it.
I hope you have great success there.
We do, too.
Are there any sort of barrier proposed with these packing toward, in front of the building, to keep people from?
From pulling forward onto the patio area?
Right now, there's curbing, six-inch curbing, which is pretty typical. We probably have the room to put a few bollards that might help protect the seating area. The seating area, there's a fence in the seating area, too, right?
We do typically ask for a fence. I don't know if you have them showed here, but we do like a fence, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I think all the way along, too, is this concern around the front. And so, a lot of times, we do see bollards, you know, placed. It's not the prettiest.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, they're steel, steel with, you know, filled with concrete is typically the bollard.
Where would you place them?
So, we have six feet, the sidewalk width is six feet there, so we would place them within that six-foot sidewalk area, which is probably still enough to, there's still enough width there, since it's a little wider than usual.
Anybody that's going to roll into a parking space, a lot of times, they'll let the front wheels roll right up to the edge of the curve.
That is true.
Stop, so that means you've got an overhang. So, you've got to accommodate that, too, before you put the bollards in, otherwise they'll be hitting those.
We can take a look at that. We have some, a few feet there, we can make the whole thing wider, that could accommodate the two-foot overhang, still provide a four-foot walkway and area for bollards.
With sturdy fence, the way you've got it shown, might be enough, though.
Some kind of iron fence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It shows a fence, shows something there now, which I would take to be a fence, so.
Yeah.
That's almost a preventive thing in itself.
Yeah, I think it's adequate over a bollard, to be honest with you.
I don't think you've got enough room to get the bollards in. You'll be taking up half the sidewalk space to do that.
We would need to, we would need to gain some more space in order to install the bollards.
We could just put electric charging stations right there.
Run a cord from across the street.
Yeah, I see the one.
The one Tesla sitting there?
North of Cape Cod, going in there.
I could afford a Tesla, I would, right?
There's a whole bunch of stations over in the mall.
Yeah, and there's one guy that fuels up. At about a 60-mile radius.
One thing that we had gone over with Charlie and just wanted to highlight to the board is the lot line between our fee-owned property and the Walmart parcel, you'll see that there's the shared parking that really is going to serve this building one. And the question was, you know, seeing as this is an actual lot line and not a leased line, does the landscape requirement and setback requirements apply? And that issue was addressed in connection with the subdivision of the overall lot, and when the reciprocal parking was created, which we had discussed and will pull copies of the documents that just confirm, it would make no sense to have this shared drive and parking area and then stick a landscape barrier in between it. So, it was dealt with prospectively, but we can get documentation to confirm that to the board.
These already exist, right, on the?
Yes, all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would make no sense.
Have you passed this by the fire department yet to see if they're satisfied with the turning movements and the radius curves?
We have not. It hasn't changed, really, from the previous plan.
You did say that you cleared those radiuses.
Correct.
Yeah, the turn-in is exactly as it was, but this plan came hot off the press.
Yeah.
But, yeah, this week, we can also get this in front of the fire and make sure that they're comfortable.
The only one that might be complicated is where that break is in the island that's just to the north of the store, where you make a left and then you sort of make a right and then would make a left to get out again. If that curve was flattened just a little bit, it would make the return a little easier to get out, maybe.
Can you show me?
As long as they can do it, you know.
Yeah, you want to?
Yeah, if you can just show it to Eric.
Something like that.
Yeah.
It just, it just makes it easier to get around this corner, that's all.
Yep. Yeah, we can do that.
And I would leave this alone.
The fire department, the route we were showing through here was over to this part of the site and then out.
Yeah.
Not so much through the site, but we can, we can do that, that's fine.
Yeah, I see no problem with the rest of it. I think it's a big improvement over what the other plans showed, so.
The message was received.
Last hearing, was there questions you had about the operation of Starbucks? I thought there was. But now that the drive-through's changed those.
Yeah, I think the queuing around the building was driving a lot of the questions, it seemed.
Just didn't want to make it, I think you wasted a trip.
Is there any commercial downside to reversing it this way? Just trying to understand this myself. What is the reason you prefer to forward face the road? Just visibility?
So, yeah, for us, we would prefer when our front door is facing the road in some cases, just because of, you know, the patio, the front door. But, if it doesn't make sense with easy access to the parking, then there are many cases where it does end up being flipped like this. And it works, you know, just fine like this as well, and there's ways to dress up the back of the building.
This would not have worked without the shared parking. You know, the fact that that was there allowed us to make this change, but as a site, this size site with this width, it wouldn't have, wouldn't have worked without us utilizing that, the Walmart parking.
You're going to still park the RVs over there?
That's a good question.
As long as they buy coffee.
You'll also have signage, I assume, facing the Walmart side?
Yes. We'd like signage on all three sides of our space.
So, you're going to come back with the finishing?
So, to somebody, obviously, it's up to the board how they want to proceed. We had drafted a, you know, proposed decision that it could be conditions that we come back in two weeks and you guys approve the further plans, or not. I obviously would like the client to feel that he doesn't need to come back from Michigan, that there isn't any substantive further discussion, if that's feasible. If you guys conceptually are ready to vote, subject to.
We're not going to talk about them if there's not here, so.
You know, subject to the changes that we've discussed and approval in two weeks of the, you know, facade elevation slash two-sided color renderings, something along those lines.
Is it possible to approve the pad layout and the circulation? It just pulled back on the final comment on the facade? I mean, that's, that's really what you need to get going, right? You need this footprint so you can get things in motion.
People can start to spend money, basically.
I'll get you, and we'll get a 3D rendering of each angle, exactly how it's going to look, so.
Yeah, our comments were relatively minor concerns. I mean, the orientation of the brick, the setback off the sidewalk, we just wanted aesthetically looking correct. We didn't want it to look like you're pulling into an industrial park.
Right.
I mean, we're in it.
Nothing really stood out. I mean, at the roof levels, just consistent with what was said over at Delta, we don't want to see the HVAC equipment on the roof.
Yeah.
So, just make sure the parapet camouflages that stuff. I don't know if that has.
You've never had to climb over one of those, have you?
Every development we do, we learned our lesson, we just did one and they didn't build it high enough. We had to go put a whole new piece on the building.
Yeah, I think in some regards, it's helpful to know who the other tenant is, because if they put in a restaurant there, they need an exceptional amount of gear on that roof. You'd like to know that beforehand, but that's for you all to determine, but it's, Emmanuel's best versed on the architectural acceptance.
I'm sure it'll be fine, just let us look at it.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
Now, you're, I'd just gone through this. You projected 900 gallons a day sewer flow?
So, I left that in from our site plan approval from last year. That's what the allocated max flow, I think, was doing the square footage calc's based on.
Right.
Last year's plan.
Is that the prior decision you're looking at?
No, that's the proposed new one, but.
Oh, okay.
Sewer and water findings I left in there to confirm. We technically probably don't even.
Is the 12,000 for the whole site, or just that building?
The whole site. That's what the town had allocated to the out parcel when the subdivision occurred.
And we did do a, when we changed this to a restaurant use, we did coordinate with the sewer department on whether, you know, more flows from the restaurant, that that was taken into account with the sewer that we had previously or were currently building at the time for Aspen, which comes across the front of this building, or now the back of the building, and ties into a manhole very close to the Walmart entrance. And that's been constructed.
You know what your Starbucks, what your water demand is, roughly?
Offhand, no. It's per, it's per, it's per seat, like 10 gallons per seat or something. It's a lot more than the retail, depending on how many seats you have.
Most of it leaves the building.
Yeah.
The reason I ask is they're, they're getting really touchy about its capacity at the plant.
Is that a real number, 10 gallons per seat?
I believe so, Title V.
Make me a copy.
It's so overestimated.
Wash the cup. I used the bathroom once, I flushed a gallon and a half down there. I just find that.
Yeah, but you leave and somebody else comes back and takes that same seat, and now you're flushing it again. It's probably basic, similar to what Title V says. When you design the septic system for a restaurant like this, it's not on sewer, it's so many gallons per seat. And it's much more than what.
The seat change turns it over 10 times?
Yeah, sure, could. The one thing that I just pick up in the, in this is that it really needs to reference specifically the date and the title of the new plan.
Yep.
Because we hadn't submitted the new plan set.
Yeah.
I just left it a little more general. If you want to send in.
Yeah, we'll coordinate that.
Caption.
And the date, for me, the date of the plan set's always very important. The title's important, too, but the date. And that'll be a 20, between 15 and 20 plans. They'll all be revised.
Starbucks still sells CDs at the counter?
No.
No music at all anymore?
No.
They'll give you a kazoo.
Play music in it, yeah.
Was that ever a moneymaker for you guys?
No, it was not, no.
It's just community involvement?
Yeah.
Is there anything in the original special permit that is not included in this one that would remain as a part of the actual approval?
The natural heritage findings and things like that, I didn't leave in to have them confirmed again, because nothing related to that had changed.
Well, I think they, I think they removed that portion of the property from many aspects of natural heritage, anyway. After it happened, I think they actually did away with it. I don't even think it counts anymore.
They took away 50 houses of approved development when I was a full-time developer, something like eight weeks after we conceded the issue.
Well, I think the original owner of this property paid like $300,000, the natural heritage.
Oh, yeah. Or, yeah, it's, natural heritage is a trip, but we certainly can add it back in and update it. I just, I figured the existing approval was sufficient and we weren't bringing up any changes, because this is a modification of an existing permit.
What are we going to find, that we disturbed every square inch of that property? A ton more civil work to be done there, is there? They're going down a little bit for the pads, but.
Yeah, yeah. It's virtually done.
Yeah, the site plan is very, very close to what it was before. You'll incorporate that, I assume, into your plan set.
We will, yeah. We will have modified, you know, drainage and.
Because I don't think they've, they've not made the connection for the sewer yet to Aspen Dental, to the best of my knowledge.
Oh, they told us they did, so we'll, we'll.
I've never seen it. We've never, they've never requested any pressure testing of the lines or vacuum testing of the sewer manholes or anything like that, so we need to be sure that's in.
Are all these buildings connected onsite and then one lateral into the?
Yeah, there's a, there's one spot where they pick it up over in this corner.
Everything passes this, you know, towards the Starbucks and towards Walmart.
On the south side of the retail, I presume that is the ordering station?
Correct.
I guess you will deal with it, but would the retail tenant have need for glass or for, might there be any consideration for the, for the retail tenants' promotional aspect? Would that be a blank wall or with windows, or if it's a clothing store?
Yeah, yeah, well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would have a blank wall at the location of the ordering. We'll have some, probably some landscaping there, too, as well.
Could that order board be moved to the southeast corner of the building, closer to the corner?
Tor, like, towards the road?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, it's actually.
I was actually saying it probably should be moved a car or two towards the corner, so it actually would probably address that, too, so.
Free up more of the facade on that side.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that. Plus, then, that actually leaves more room for queuing decisions to get out before they order, if you bump it down.
Just as a point of reference, the one that's across the street, Wendy's, is in sort of like this configuration. You enter here, you come around. You enter here, you come around and the signboard's right there. And then you turn around the corner and there are two windows. There's the payment window and then there's the pickup window at this end. But the signboard is on this side. Not that it makes any difference.
Yeah.
Just saying that they did, that's what they did across the road.
So, they loop around the building first, complete loop around the building almost, and then...
Eventually, but just about like what you've done.
Yeah, okay.
The only difference is that the way it's set up, this is Toby Road here, and they make a left to go in, the auto zone is here. You turn in this way and come around the side of the building toward Cranberry Highway and then you turn again to the signboard.
Yep.
But then you're able to go out almost the same way that you have it and you make a turn to come back out again. Your configuration is similar and I think it, I think it works.
Okay, any public comment?
We pack them in, don't we? We win the war of attrition.
You might.
We came all the way from Michigan for that.
Three times.
Three times in 14 days, but it's worth it, I think. We'll see shortly.
You probably want to keep the hearing open though for the other planes because you won't be able to take any input at all if you close the hearing, so...
You can't vote until you close the hearing, right?
Yeah, you don't want to close the hearing because then you wouldn't be able to submit your other documentation.
Well, that's true, until we have the full plan set.
So, it's, you know, best to keep it open.
But if they need some assurance that the plan works, they can proceed. Would that help?
I assume, I assume it would. I mean, I haven't heard much...
Yeah, I mean, it's our issue that in order to rework the site, we weren't able to get a full plan set prior to the meeting. That said, I think it was better to do this and do it right. You know, any approval that we can get, sign of approval, indication that gives us the confidence and hopefully Starbucks the confidence to, you know, start moving forward. Unfortunately, things happen. Two weeks go by, maybe there's a coronavirus building closing. My New York office is closed. We have 400 people, can't go to the office. So, the sooner we can get approved, obviously, the better, even if it's a conceptual vote of the board or something, subject to, plus you would need your same quorum present.
Can we even vote without?
Yes, you can.
What's this guy's name, Richard?
Richard Swenson, yes, you can.
And we can't vote on this and then just open up another public hearing two weeks from now, is there?
No.
For the facade?
No.
We gotta keep it continuous?
Could vote to authorize us to move forward with the revised plan set, as discussed, to come back for final approval in two weeks? That probably would be a meaningful vote, but still leaving the hearing open and you guys able to comment on the final facades and things.
Project approval pending the architectural renditions, submittal, and a plan set that represents the approved...
Final drawings.
As discussed tonight. That work?
That's the motion.
I would, could I just make a suggestion that you don't actually make it a vote? Make it a consensus, at least for now? And you vote on the whole thing as a package?
Would that accomplish what you want to do on your end?
Is the concern, what's the concern? I mean, from our perspective, that's more of a vote, is more of an approval?
It is, it's an approval. And all I'm saying is that you want to approve it in conjunction with the other documentation which you haven't seen. I would think it would be fine to vote on the concept and the layout configuration that you have, but keep it a consensus vote until you've got all of the documentation in front of you and then vote as a package.
Can we, can we split it into two issues to take a vote on the footprint approval only and then take a second vote, follow-up meeting on the facade?
You can't vote until you close the hearing, Mark.
But can we each express our view of the site plan?
Sure.
So, we can, we can offer our personal approval without actual voting?
What's it?
So, I have a question from, like, a timing perspective. So, we're kind of planning our store count for the year and timing of this project. So, how would that work if we, however, if it's a vote or consensus today and then we come back in two weeks with the elevations and building drawings and things like that? Is there then changes and influence on that? Then we would have to come back again with updates or...
No, it's just, it's a 20-day public comment.
Okay, so we would come back...
From the closed hearing and final vote. I think, I think what Alana is asking is, other than review, comment on the elevations and things that weren't depicted in the site plan, you know, new members could catch up on the hearing by watching it as the chair did. And, you know, are we gonna open up potentially this discussion again, all over again in two weeks? Which is the concern because we don't really feel like we have, you know, approval as long as we do the things that we just discussed. They're not gonna want to get forward.
I know from the last meeting, Mike and Richard, their concerns were no different than ours. It was just the traffic pattern. So, if we've addressed that tonight, I can't see where they would come up with anything different.
Everyone's gonna be committed to coming in two weeks too, right? Can we...
Well, I think you, realistically, you may see some requests for some alteration in your facade or something like that.
Sure.
But I don't see anything more than that.
But then, so then, if there are changes to the facade and things, then we'd have to come back again, I guess, is my question, to get it fully approved?
No, I think we can...
You can make conditions at some point if there's a condition that you tweak this.
Okay.
I think we had nine conditions on our original approval because they were very accommodating so that we could get Delta Dental in ground.
Thanks for the clarification.
If we say in a generic sense that the conditions on the facade and the setbacks is consistent with Delta Dental, I don't know that we'd add anything different. You know, we might want to, we certainly want to see and make some suggestions on the architectural design, but the conditions are generally generic in nature. We're not, we're not picking the color of the brick and we've already defined the consistency of the clapboard and where they've sat in front of us just a short time ago. I think if we have the reference from the same client on the requirements of the facade. So, I think we can switch the pendulum here just to come back and...
I think we actually had that last time because the last time, we only had the Aspen Dental elevations because the other two buildings were unknown. So, part of that first approval had language similar to what you're saying.
Yeah.
Generic language based on the architecture without the actual architecture done yet. But this is pretty close.
I was gonna say, would this be helpful to look at what you've got and we could kind of...
Look at it in what way? Pass it around or...
Well, just put it out front so the board can see it.
We'll start it on this end and you can... So, this is Detroit Architecture did the Aspen Dental as well.
Yeah, I'm personally, I can only speak for myself. I'm not concerned that the client's choices are gonna be any distasteful, that it's not gonna be consistent with what we want. I know that, you know, our concerns are the appearance of the facade, the size of the signage, the placement, the door, things that we talked about tonight. I, you know, for me, the elevation at the parapet level covering the mechanics on the roof is probably my biggest concern.
Well, I think probably the other...
The grades are pretty much there, right? I mean, we can drive down that street tonight, there can't be that much...
There's no changes in grade.
Yeah. So, we're talking just from slab up, so the elevations are not gonna...
I guess probably the only issue we want to really know is this is, instead of facing Walmart's parking lot, it's gonna be facing Toby Road.
Correct.
You know, what are your plans for that side? Would be...
That's the elevation that probably would change the most from that sheet.
Very promising. Yeah. This is the elevation now on the west, the west elevation? It says east, but it...
Yes.
Yeah.
And there'll be some changes to make it more appealing to the...
Yeah, if you can make the west a little more appealing, I'm sorry. But that's, it's fine, yeah.
And honestly, I've never seen an ugly Starbucks. I mean, they're all, all the buildings are very tasteful. I don't think I've ever seen one that looked out of place for where it was.
They have a building program requirement. There's not a lot of room for movement.
So... Mike's our only Starbucks verification on this.
You'll all be customers soon, right?
I can't sure the drive-through is wide enough to get my truck through. That's all I care about.
From my, from my perspective, what you just showed us is the, is going towards the end product. You can move, from my perspective, you can move forward with this footprint.
I would have to agree.
I disagree.
We want the helipad.
Can we, your statement was accurate, Mr. Chairman. I can't remember what it... Well, I guess it's null and void, right? So, we're making a proposal on the layout and the architectural design to be consistent with Delta Dental would be my proposal for...
Or better than.
Aspen Dental?
Aspen.
Aspen takes Delta, but doesn't...
Mark, why not not, why not consistent with what we were just shown?
Yeah, I think that would be a better description.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, I mean, Aspen Dental has a little bit of a Taco Bell look to it.
That's why I'm only the second guy. Just second motions.
Would a consensus vote do for you what you're hoping to do or would...
Yeah, and I, I mean, there's only so much that we can expect without having submitted the full plan set, but the, you know, whatever language you're comfortable, the hearing is open, as point of disclosure, you can always make a motion to reconsider. So, we're just looking for a good faith show from you guys of whatever you're willing to do. Got free legal advice there.
Wasn't free for me.
I'm the last honest lawyer on earth.
Well, you, I'm sure you understand that we're hesitant to close the hearing and...
We don't want you to for Charlie's point. It wouldn't serve our interests to close it without having submitted the package that needs to be voted on. So, there's nothing that we can do, but if you can give us a vote conceptually approving what was presented, subject to consistent architecture with what is shown on the existing plans and subject to the plan changes that were discussed tonight.
Can I make a second comment on the document as well? That you do make reference, you said that the owner appeared before the Board of Appeals and obtained a use variance. Might be wise to at least attach a copy of it or reference where the book and page and the registry is, if that's recorded, just so that it becomes part of the record here?
Why don't we just attach it so that there's gonna be one, one place to look for, for the whole thing would be...
Yeah, and that would have the book and page on it anyway.
Yeah.
So, would a motion to approve the concept of the plan pending final plan sets and review? Would that be sufficient? Don't ask me to repeat it.
I think they got the message.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, we're good.
Have a good trip back.
Go back confident.
So, you're gonna continue the hearing to the 23rd?
Yep. I thought we were gonna vote on that last little...
Yeah, I didn't hear a vote, actually.
Was there a second on that?
There was, there was, conceptually, a second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Let the record show a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it very much.
Welcome.
And then you want to vote to continue the hearing?
They've already reviewed it though, correct?
We'll rally up the troops. You gotta vote tomorrow night in Michigan, right?
You do.
Build America.
Vote early, vote often. Motion to continue. Motion to continue to the 23rd?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So much time could be saved if we come with it.
Great. Motion to adjourn?
Thanks for working too on that revision, it made sense.
I think we've covered our agenda. Do you have anything further, Ken?
Yeah, just to note that on the 23rd, you're gonna have a presentation of the multi-hazard mitigation plan.
He stole my hat.
I know, it's gonna be very exciting.
Well, are you guys comfortable with approving the minutes of February 24th?
I read through them, they look good.
The reason I prefer three-dimensional drawings is that...
Pick a motion to approve the minutes from February 24th?
Second.
Discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's see, this is 39?
9.
Flat elevations don't show you the, the, the faces whereas a 3D. But if they come with one picture, see, sort of that talk.
If that's all we have this evening? Book from, you got something?
No, it's good.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:32.